I'd like to call the Nashville Town Council Regular Meeting for August to order please. Could we please stand for our pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let us pray again tonight, Lord. We invite you into our meeting to lead and guide us and help us to make decisions that will benefit the citizens, the decisions that will benefit the citizens of Nashville. In your name, amen. Okay, let's begin with our first item, and that's to approve our minutes. The first minutes are for July the 1st. Did anyone find corrections that needed to be made on those minutes? If not, do I hear a motion that we approve the minutes for the agenda meeting of July 1st?
Seventh.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now we'll look at our minutes for July the 7th, the regular meeting minutes. Were there any corrections to those minutes? Any corrections? Do I hear a motion that we approve those minutes?
Seventh.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Are there any public comments?
No ma'am.
Okay, thank you kindly. Let's move on to the next item, Old Business. And that is the Windy Oak, Laura Springs Drainage Improvement Project. I'm going to read the summary of the, the summary of the issue here so that our citizens can hear. "The stormwater drainage system in the Windy Oak Drive and Laura Springs Drive neighborhood does not have an over-the-land route for stormwater to flow when the drainage system's capacity has been exceeded. This causes the stormwater to back up and flow cross-abutting residential lots. The public work staff working with the town engineer has developed a construction project to build an over-the-land route for the excess stormwater to flow and has prepared written specifications for the project. Three area evacu- evacu- I can't even say it, excavating contractors, all of who are qualified to construct such a project, looked at the project. Ed Braswell and Sons Construction of Rocky Mount, SAC Enterprise of Nashville, and Weaver's Asphalt and Maintenance Company of Rocky Mount. Two contractors have submitted bids, SAC Enterprises for $29,710 and Weaver's Asphalt for $43,000. The FY-21 stormwater budget contains $30,000 for small drainage improvement projects. And the manager's recommendation is to approve this resolution, 2020-17, awarding a construction contract on the Windy Oak Drive, Laura Springs Drive Drainage Improvement Project." Are there any comments about this from the board members? From the council members? Yes, Randy?
We do have Kevin Varnell, our town engineer, here this evening. And as you know, we've extended a contract with Stock's Engineering to study the stormwater drainage in this area. And Kevin is far left along with that project that he's got a follow-up report to the council tonight, which is going to have some impact, obviously, on what the recommendation is. So Kevin, I'll turn it over to you.
All right, thank you guys. I do have a couple of handouts for you that I think will help make things a little easier. So what I've handed you is a copy of an aerial map that kind of just gives you an idea of the area that we're talking about. And if you get it oriented north up, you'll see Nashville Elementary over on the far-left-hand side, right on 58 Highway. And then right in the middle, you see Par Drive, and there's Stormwater Pond that's in the back. And on the right-hand side of your map, you'll see Windy Oak Drive, which is in South Creek. And then the Kelly, which is the Donald Kelly House, that really is the one that was affected and kind of started this. So really, it just kind of gives you an idea as I go through and mention some of these, it orients it kind of where they are. So if you look at the 11-by-17 handout, what we tried to do was come up with a way to compare the current condition and then a couple of alternatives, including the one that we've had priced out. So right now, if you look at it, what we call the level of service is the storm event that the current stormwater system will handle. So that really means that the current level of service right now is a one-year storm event, which really means that anything above that will start to back up water into Par Drive, Windy Oak, and begin to start overtopping the road. So what we kind of did is we went through and kind of separated between Par Drive and Windy Oak so that we could talk about the two different areas. And if you see in the 10-year storm event, which is the second item, it says 1.25 feet. So in the 10-year storm event, Par Drive has around 1.25 feet of water in the street, which is 15 inches, which is what we really experienced during the last storm event and what most of those homeowners talked about. And then if you look at the 100-year storm event, the Par Drive now goes underwater 2.2 feet. And if you look over in the far side of the comments, what it says is that based on these models, the 100-year storm event will flood the homes on Par Drive with the current drainage system that we have in place. And if you keep going across that line, Windy Oak Drive currently has a one-year level of service, and it currently overflows the road at the 10-year storm event at 0.5 feet or six inches. And the 100-year storm event is 1.6. So really, when we modeled the system and looked at it, the issue that we're running into is really the pipe size on Windy Oak Drive. It's a 24-inch pipe that goes from Windy Oak Drive and really goes through South Creek over the Lower Springs Drive, and that is what is really backing up water. And Par Drive right now is a foot below the Windy Oak Drive overtopping elevation. So what we're seeing is before it can overtop Windy Oak Drive, it's backing up around a foot of water into Par Drive. So that's why we're seeing the conditions that we are, is really from that one pipe. So what we did was come up with a couple of solutions, and these aren't all the solutions. There are many that we could choose from, but we tried to choose the one that obviously we already had priced out, that we thought was the most cost-effective, and that's the one at the top, the lowering Windy Oak Drive, 2 feet. So when we looked at that and modeled it, it really only gives us a level of service of one year. So it didn't change anything as far as Par Drive is concerned. We still have around .4 feet of water on Par Drive when we do that. The 100-year storm event still has 1.6, which we consider unacceptable. You really can't drive through a foot and a half of water. And then on Windy Oak Drive, what you see is that level of service actually increases, so it does get a little better. But what we're seeing is the 10-year storm event actually increases from the current condition because we lowered the street. So that kind of makes sense when you think about the model. We just took the street and lowered it 2 feet so water can overtop. So by default now, the water has to increase over top of the street. So the depth now goes from .5 to 1.1 feet, and then the 100-year storm event is 2.1 feet. So we really said, everything that you see in red are numbers that would be outside of what we would consider a normal and safe street access. So we began to try to get numbers that work. So the next one down would be a 36-inch pipe beside the existing 24. And if we did that, it gives us a 5-year level of service on Par Drive. It gives us a .2 foot of water at the 10-year storm event, .8 feet of water at the 100-year. And then on Windy Oak Drive, we now dropped down to .1 in the 10-year event, but we're still at 1.2 feet in the 100-year storm event. So then we begin to try to say, well, how do we get that even better? And we drop in a 48-inch pipe beside the 24. And again, you see that bottom line. The 10-year storm event for Par Drive goes to zero. It doesn't overtop the road anymore. The 100-year storm event is .7 feet, which is an acceptable depth for that. And then Windy Oak Drive, again, is the 10-year storm event is zero, does not overtop the road anymore. And the 100-year storm event is one foot, which is really what we designed it to. And what happens when you do that, if you read over in the comments, it does increase the 100-year storm elevation where the water goes underneath South Creek Drive by .33 feet. And based on our discussions with adjacent homeowners, they have never seen that ditch overflow. They have seen it get to the top, and they have never seen it overtop the road. So when we run our models, it seemed to match up with what they had said, and the .33 feet, we feel like is still an acceptable level of service for that crossing at South Creek Drive. So we don't feel like doing the bottom two options would affect once we get downstream. Really, the issue that we run into is that section between Windy Oak Drive and Lower Springs, which is where we have that small pipe. So based on these proposed solutions, when we looked at the top one, which is the proposal that you guys have, we really didn't feel like it accomplished a whole lot. It did make Par Drive better, but then it made Windy Oak Drive worse for the four homeowners in the cul-de-sac. So we really, like I said, that was a tough one that really just didn't, once we did the model, make a lot of sense from that standpoint. And I know I covered a lot of information, so I'll be happy to answer some questions or kind of go through this as you guys can digest it. If you look at the bottom, I've got some general observations. When we looked at the model, the retention pond on Par Drive is really doing very little. What's happening is the storm system is actually backing up into that pond before it really has a chance to do a lot. So that pond currently is not being maintained, but it really doesn't do a lot for the stormwater in that area anyway. Par Drive is constructed approximately one foot below the Kelly property at Windy Oak, which really means that as the water backs up, the Par Drive is going to go a foot underwater before anything can spill over. And then three, the existing 24-inch pipe under Windy Oak currently carries 24 CFS, which is cubic feet per second. The 5-year storm event is 53 cubic feet per second, and the 10-year storm event will be 80. So what you're really seeing is if we're looking at designing it to the 10-year storm event, which would be what we would consider normal for a street, we're really about a quarter of what we need as far as flow capacity. And then again, the Kelly House crawl space sits right at the Windy Oak overtopping elevation, which is why he experienced water in his house. And as that water came through, it was going underneath the house. So again, at no point does a model show it going into the Kelly House, but obviously it does go underneath the crawl space, which is certainly a concern, and it goes in between the house and the garage. But the concern to us when we looked at the model was really the Par Drive location.
Thank you. Any questions?
So where does the developer fit into this?
Well, I guess the reality, probably how it really happens in the real world, is South Creek was developed, you know, several years ago. And that pipe was really undersized for handling any flow coming to it. And it was probably backing up water into the Par Drive area during the entire time it was undeveloped. And because nothing was really modeled in that area, FEMA's not going to look at local locations, and there's really, without really tracing it out all the way downstream, there's no way to really know what that pipe system does. So what really happened is the Par Drive area, I think, met the criteria, but there was an issue downstream that really caused the initial issue, and it was probably always backing water up into that area, and we really didn't notice it until houses started getting built. Because now there are people there to look at it, to see it. It was probably happening all along, it's just we weren't getting those. Again, 10-year storm events, we're getting every 10 years, so you're just not noticing it that often. Does that make sense? So I think they met the criteria in those subdivisions, based on what the current standards offer Nashville. But again, the Par Drive issue was really something that happened over in South Creek long before Par Drive was built.
Would it help the neighborhood in it if that retaining pond was deeper?
The retaining pond really is not the issue. So right now, if you can look at the whole area, drainage area that you've got, and how much water really backs up, when Par Drive is 15 inches underwater, that pond is like a five-gallon bucket compared to a pond. It really is insignificant to the stormwater area that we need. So the pond being bigger, deeper, really doesn't serve any purpose. The solution has to be something to go along with Windy Oak and allowing that water to get out of there.
Where does that water go when it leaves that neighborhood?
So it goes from Windy Oak over the Lower Springs, and then there's a big canal that runs and crosses South Creek Drive.
So does it run away from Nashville, or does it come back into?
It runs to the south of Nashville.
To the south.
That's right. Ends up in the swamp that crosses Old Spring Hook Road.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments?
So Kevin, you were recommending that 48-inch pipe?
We, and again, we haven't finished the report. I did have enough information to kind of talk about it tonight. But yes, if it was our recommendation, and again, we don't really have the specs to kind of back up what we're doing, but if we use the City of Raleigh design spec for streets, what they want to see is a 10-year storm level of service and then an overtopping of the 100-year of no more than a foot. So that's kind of what we base that last model on. It meets the City of Raleigh design criteria, and that's kind of why I threw that out, just to give us something to go act and have something to design to. So if we had to give a recommendation, yes, that one meets all the criteria that we would like to see in that situation. So if you're doing the second one, the 36-inch pipe, you're already digging the trench, you're already going, you know, in the, why not go ahead and put a little bit bigger pipe? The only difference now is the cost of the pipe. That would just be my suggestion if we were going forward.
So basically, we would need new bids for the?
It would be a completely different solution than what we've got proposed. The one we have proposed, again, is that top line.
Right.
And as you can see, I really don't think it gives us the final solution that we wanted to see. I think it makes things work. It fixes one area, makes one area work.
Right. Any other comments? So we just probably need to table this then until we get your bids or the information that we need to approve it.
Kevin, will you have for the next, for the September council meeting, the full report and maybe a recommendation at that time, how to go forward so that this neighborhood doesn't have problems?
That's right. The report will be to you guys before the next council meeting. And like I said, we had all the data, we're just trying to put together the report before this meeting. But we can have that report to you to have these same, really these same recommendations in it, and then we'll have a cost estimate in there as well to kind of discuss what we think that would cost. But we could certainly, between now and the next month, you know, try to get some contractors to look at it. I don't know if we can get those prices back that short, but we can certainly try.
Thank you so kindly.
Can I ask one other question?
Sure.
Kevin, do you know of any other potential issues we have townwide where we may see something like this again?
In the town? I'm sure there are some isolated areas, but I have not heard any complaints recently. The problem with storm events is the, depending on how the rain comes, it affects different areas different ways. So just like the last storm event that we had flooded, obviously, down through the Hardees and that area, along Stony Creek. And it flooded this area, but it didn't affect some of the other ones so much. But then you have the, you know, the Matthew Hurricane that obviously flooded a lot more. So it depends on how the rain events come, to how they affect certain areas. There are some drainage issues kind of scattered around that are smaller in nature. This one actually turned out to be a little larger with Par Drive being the main concern. So that's the one that I think has always, we've known there was an issue there, but there are other little minor ones, but nothing at all in design.
Down the hill where the Dos Hermanos and those places are, there's really not anything that can be done there because of the proximity to the creek, is that true?
That's right. Really, so this issue was caused by a small pipe. The issue with Dos Hermanos, and I mean, that stretch through the Hardees and all that, was really Stony Creek. Stony Creek got too much rain at one time, and Stony Creek backed up on us. So you're talking about two, two issues, two different issues, I guess, that really the Stony Creek one, there's no, I'm not saying there are no solutions because there are, but just not, not even that are realistic.
Got it.
So I mean, really, those businesses and buildings need to be built up, not necessarily trying to do something stormwater-wise. It's just too much water to try to address.
Understood. We'll just have to make Stony Creek deeper.
And like I said, the problem is just the volume of water. This location, we can handle this volume, there's things we can do. Once you get to Stony Creek, the volume's just too big, and it's cheaper to buy businesses than it would be to buy solutions.
Right.
And also keeping Stony Creek cleaned out.
That's right. That's right. It's like I said, there are some things that can be done, but at the end of the day, there's still, there will always be a storm event that floods something in town. I mean, we just can't design to every event that we get. But Stony Creek, obviously, keeping it cleaned out is going to be a major solution to try to keep that better.
Was that an issue last night?
With the?
Any flooding at all?
Not that I'm aware of. I have not heard of it.
Mayor, this is, this is the second time that this has come before the board concerning this particular problem in this neighborhood. In the second meeting, and I said at the last meeting that I was all in favor of us doing something to alleviate this problem, and I still am. But my concern right now is, this is the second time this has come to the table of the board for us to do something, and all of a sudden, already we have a proposal of $30,000 to put out here to, to correct this problem, and we are yet to do anything with Windwood, Indian Trail. I mean, we're going to talk about this for two weeks, two months, and all of a sudden, we're already, not all of a sudden, but already we have a proposal to correct this problem, but we still don't have a proposal to help the people out in Windwood. So that, that concerns me.
Have we looked at that out there, Randy?
Over the years, excuse me, that has been addressed, but it's been piecemeal. And so...
If I may, Mayor, yes, there's some follow-up on that, and Larry too. Mary Jo, or Nancy Nixon with Nash County, put me in touch with Jason Fett Pleasant with NCDEQ about a buyout program. And I also reached out to Mary Jo Elko with Governor Cooper's office, and she provided me some information too. There is a CDBG flood buyout program that I'm receiving information on and hoping to make an application to that. I don't have the application form yet. I'm still waiting for the contact person with INCOR of North Carolina. It's Maggie Battlegale about that CDBG, they call it a HUD buyout program, but Housing and Urban Development funds the Community Development Block Grant Program. And in North Carolina, they took some of that block grant money and speared it off to help people with reoccurring flood problems in specific neighborhoods. And I think a lot of the folks in Indian Trail would probably qualify for that. If you're familiar with the CDBG program, it is for low-to-moderate income people, and so it's not usable for everybody. But part of the problem with Indian Trails, Kevin has alluded to already, it's just the volume of water. The solution for the folks out there, in my opinion, is to simply buy them out and put them at a higher elevation where they don't have to worry about every time the storm clouds align, are we going to be evacuated tonight or not? So that's, that's the route I'm pursuing, and I apologize it's taking so long. A lot of different agencies to get to this point, and you know, I'm very grateful that Mary Jo Elko with the governor's office got involved and helped me track down this particular program.
Those residents that are out there that got flooded the last time we had rain, a heavy rain, are they, are they willing to adhere to the buyout, buyout program? Are they candidates for that program?
Several that I've talked to, yeah, they've had it.
The lady at, the lady at the very end of the dead-end street, is she one of them?
Yes.
Is she here? Okay.
And the one beside her.
And the one beside her? Are you ladies interested in the buyout program?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'd like to see us continue to follow through with that, and I appreciate that information.
Yeah.
Mayor Bryan?
Yes.
Okay, the two houses that have recently been bought out, that was a result of Matthew. But it's taken this long for it to come to fruition.
It has, yes.
So we're talking at least four years.
Well, that particular program, that was through FEMA. This is through Housing and Urban Development. I don't know if it'll be any faster, but you know, certainly...
If it's a good program, I don't think these families need to wait four more years. They've been out there long enough already.
I agree.
Because I understand, I wasn't on the board when Windwood was built, but I'm told that it was recommended that, that subdivision out there shouldn't have never been built to begin with.
Parts of it, definitely. We know that now today.
We know it now.
Thank you.
And that's why I say we need to hit, keep developers deep to the fire on this.
That's right.
Because there's a lot of land around here that is wetland. And if you're going to build on wetland, if you're allowed to do it...
You should be responsible.
Yeah. I mean, and like Kevin said, we've got Tar River to, to work with, but we can't move Tar River.
Or Stony Creek.
I meant Stony Creek.
That's right.
We can't move Stony Creek. It's here, so if you're going to build anywhere near it, then you should be able to protect the residents from it.
And I understand too that our data's getting better. So up until really around 1960, we did not collect a lot of stormwater data. So these recent storm events that we've had have given us more and more information. That's why the floodplain line keeps moving. So we just had a new floodplain line in 2013. The first one was done in 2004. So obviously, things are adjusting as we go forward, and that would take care of, really some of Windwood is now in the floodplain that really wasn't before. So a lot of that is getting better as we go, but we need some storm events, unfortunately, to kind of show us where these areas really are. So again, we're getting there, but just the data we need.
Kevin, let me ask you this question. I asked about the hole-in pond at the other, out to?
Par Drive.
Par Drive. The hole-in, the pond that's out at, at Windwood, if that pond was dredged out deeper, would that help solve the problem for these people out there?
So depth has nothing to do with how much stormwater it will hold. So the stormwater effect would be what's on top of the water. So the natural water level that's there right now?
Uh huh.
Is just water that's there. It will keep fish from dying, it will help with water quality.
But if you dig, but if you dig it deeper, won't the water, water level go down if you dig it deeper?
No, because the outlet stays the same. So the outlet controls with the water surface level, and the outlet can't get any lower because Stony Creek is there. So we've looked at a lot of that area already, and we've done some drainage improvements where the ditch is kind of upstream of the pond. But again, once it gets to the pond, the outlet controls that elevation of the, of the water that's there.
Because it goes in and comes back out.
That's right. Well, except for, I mean, it stays in, so when it rains, the pond starts filling up, and then it goes back down to the, whatever the outlet elevation is.
Okay.
So really, it's what's on top. So dredging the pond deeper, unless you could lower the outlet, you're not going to change how much water it will hold back.
Okay, I got you.
Any other questions? Thank you so kindly.
All right. Thank you guys.
And I'm glad that we're taking care of all of our citizens, so that they'll be safe and their homes not damaged. Now, do we need a vote to table this? I think we do. Do I hear a motion that we table this till our next meeting?
Till May.
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Now we're going to move on to our new business, item 7A, the selling timber on the town's 101 and 111 Industry Court lots. Do you want me to turn that over to you, or do you want me to read the summary?
You can read the summary.
Okay, I'll read the summary so the citizens that are watching will know what we're doing. As you may recall, we have a shell building developer that wants to partner with the town of Nashville and build a 15,000-square-foot shell building at the Nashville Business Center on a lot owned by the town, 111 Industry Court. In order for this to happen, the trees on the eight-acre lot will need to be removed. I've had the timber appraised by Chris Cobb, South Atlantic Timber Services Incorporated of Nashville. He also appraised the timber on the town's other seven-acre lot on Industry Court, and the timber on the town's adjoining 27 acres in the Stony Creek Bottom. The appraisal timber value is $40,920. In talking with Chris, I have discovered there are many regulations governing logging in North Carolina, especially in floodplains and along blue-lined streams. I've also learned that there are some logging companies that do not adhere to best logging practices, leaving logged areas a real environmental mess. In addition to timber appraisals, Chris also competitively bids logging jobs for timber owners, oversees logging operations, to make sure best logging practices are followed, cease to it that stream buffers are maintained, make sure the correct property is logged, that treetops and branches are clipped and hauled off, that temporary haul roads are approximately placed and built, and cleaned up after logging, and that stumps are removed from areas for replanting. I asked Chris what it would cost to have him do all of these things for the town to make sure that if the council decides to sell the timber, that the town does not end up with... up with any logging and environmental violations from N C D E Q. The cost to do so is five percent of an accepted timber purchase contract by the town. So if a logging company offers the town forty thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars for timber, a service contract with South Atlantic Timber Services would be two thousand forty-six dollars, and there would be no charge of the one thousand timber appraisal. Uh, do you want to add anything to that?
I don't, but we have Chris here this evening.
That's right, Chris is here. Chris?
Would like to hear from him. Don't be shy, Chris.
I appreciate y'all's time. I was contacted by Randy to look at the timber on these three properties, and during the course of that discussion, when looking at the one where they're proposing to put the shell building, the twenty-seven acres behind it would basically lose access as far as a logging corridor to remove the timber, once that property is sold. So timing wise, if you're gonna do them one, you might as well do them all, kind of thing, is, is the way that, that Randy and I's discussion went. Um, he pretty much, he pretty much covered everything as far as the service contract. The only thing is, we don't remove stumps. So I mean, it's, it, we will handle the reseeding, but grading and grubbing the land is cut clean, and we do, and, and the companies that we will solicit bids from have chippers. So it does a very clean job, but there's no removal of the stumps.
What would you estimate would be cost to do that?
It varies. The biggest part of that cost is gonna be removing it from site. Um, low end, you're looking probably twenty-five hundred dollars an acre to remove stumps. Low end. And I'm not a, I'm not a contractor that, that, so I'm just giving you a ballpark figure. Um, the guys that we're be soliciting bids from are logging operations, they just, they harvest the timber, remove the raw product, but not the stumps. That's a completely different animal there, and you'll need a, a grading contractor to do that. Which if they're gonna put a building up, they're gonna have to regrade anyway. I mean, they're gonna have to go out there and grade the property, they'll probably have to build it up in some spots, knock it down in some others, but... So I just wanted to make sure that that was understood.
Could, would you wait, would you wait until we get the stumps uh removed before you went in and did your file cleanup?
Um, generally, they clean up when they're moving out. So when they, when the, when the logging...
So when you're gone, you're gone.
Right. When the harvest operation is, is finished, they'll clean up on the way out, and generally do not come back, unless there's a reason for them to come back. And that, all of it will be covered in the contract. If this is something you guys move forward with, the con, the timber contract between the town of Nashville and whoever the bid's awarded to, will protect the town of Nashville as far as cleanup, as far as any paths that are put in, any kind of culverts, any of that kind of stuff. Um, anything that's damaged by the guy, or the company doing the, the logging, it, they're responsible for repairing whatever's damaged. Um, it's sort of a unique situation. You've got a sewer line running through there, and it's a low area back in there, where you're gonna need to build what's called a shovel road for probably about two hundred and fifty, three hundred feet, in order to, to minimize environmental impact. Um, it, some companies are good at that, some companies are not. Uh, the, what Randy and I discussed, you wanna make sure you've got a reputable company who, who does a good job, and you don't have to chase them down to make sure everything's right once they're done. So when, when we talk about soliciting bids, we're looking at probably four to five companies soliciting bids from them, that are reputable, that do have the right equipment, that do have the right guys running the right equipment also.
Randy, let me ask you this question. Uh, I want that lot, that property developed just like everybody else does, but I have a question. If we log it out, which we ha, we'll have to do it, but the back section of, if we log, and like you said, it's basically gonna do it all while you're in there, but if we log all that out back there, and build on that property, all the water that has, has fallen on that, it's gonna go right back to Stony Creek. How much of an impact, and Kevin making answers this better, how much of an impact is that gonna have on Stony Creek? Because Stony Creek gonna create another problem going downstream, to exacerbate a problem we already got.
Well, Larry, when the shell building gets built, they're gonna be required to capture and retain their onsite stormwater, so they'll have to put in a retention pond and release it slowly, so it doesn't impact any greater after development than it does before development.
Okay, so it would have any impact on, on Stony Creek?
And, and our, our developer that wants to partner with us on that shell building, that would be an expense of, of doing that development.
Okay.
Yeah. Now, one, one thing with regard to the fourteen acres, our two lots up top, um, my hope was we'd get enough money from the logging that it would cover the cost of grubbing out, removing all the stumps that are left.
Right.
And, you know, the, the number that Chris gave tonight of twenty-five hundred dollars an acre, at fourteen, fourteen acres is thirty-five thousand dollars. So the timber, the money we get from the timber will probably cover that. And if we bid that out, you know, the stump removal, we hopefully can get it done for less than thirty-five thousand dollars. But it is fourteen acres.
We did not get a map of the twenty-seven Stony Creek Bottom.
Well, that, that part, Louise, we would only, if we were gonna reseed part of that, that's where we'd have some of the stumps, you know, just kind of moved on the way.
I'm just saying, we did not get a map of that.
No, I, I, I gave Lou the wrong picture to put in there, I'm sorry. It's all, Chris had it all.
I think I have a map, I can, I can let you uh...
All highlight it and...
I just have one copy, but you're welcome, look at this.
We can get a copy. You, you probably need to keep that.
Okay.
We got three maps.
Okay.
And a couple of duplicates.
Yeah, one of them's a duplicate. I noticed that just this evening.
Any other questions? Thank you. Thank you so kindly.
Thank you, appreciate your time.
Well, and, and my recommendation to the council, in, in light of Chris's company's expertise and our lack of knowledge selling timber, I would recommend to the council that we enter into an agreement with his company to let bid for that timber and then oversee its harvest.
Nothing against Chris, but have we gotten any, have you looked at any other companies?
I have not. I'm, I'm not aware of any other companies in the area that do what he does. Um, if, if you're wanting to, we can, you know, we don't have to act on this this evening.
Now, this is just soliciting bids anyway, right?
And then overseeing the actual, he, he will supervise the actual logging operation, to make sure they don't go in the blue lined areas, to make sure they keep that buffer from Stony Creek, and that they are following best timber harvesting practices, which I don't know anything about.
Do I hear a motion for us to grant him, or Randy, the, the town manager, permission to execute a service contract?
Need to approve.
I'll second.
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Uh-huh.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Now, let's move to seven B of our, um, our new business. Uh, this is the, um, is that the sanitation sewer flow meter? I believe it is, yes.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I'm gonna read the summary for that issue, and then I'll turn it over to Randy. Uh, the town of Nashville has an agreement with the city of Rocky Mount to receive and treat Nashville sanitary sewer wastewater. There's a gravity flow sewer line from Nashville to Rocky Mount that has a sewer meter bought on Old Carriage Road. Per our agreement with the city of Rocky Mount, Rocky Mount has the meter calibrated annually for accuracy. Since its calibration in January, our monthly sewer bills from Rocky Mount have been forty-five thousand to fifty thousand dollars more. Lee and I believe the flow meter has been miscalibrated. To prove this and request an adjustment from Rocky Mount, we need to install a temporary flow meter, meter, and compare the two meters readings for a three month period. We have received a proposal from Wooton Company in Raleigh for five thousand five hundred dollars to oversee the installation of a second flow meter and a con, conduct, and conduct an analysis of the two meters readings. Rental or lease of the second meter is not included in Wooton's proposal. We should have a meter lease and installation proposal from a sewer flow meter vendor for the August, that's our meeting tonight. Do you have that?
I do.
Council meeting tonight, so... That's a right big increase, forty-five thousand to fifty thousand.
Lee, if you wouldn't mind lending in on that.
Talk to us, Lee.
Well, so you, Mayor may not be aware, but the town has been, I guess for lack of better words, fighting this battle since the early nineties with concerns at the flume and the, uh, measuring of the wastewater. From what we can tell, it's never been resolved, it's never been, um, and I, you know, I guess a reasonable expectation or agreement has never been had. And, you know, right at the end of last fiscal year, I'm sure you guys are aware of the budget amendments that were put in place to account for the wastewater treatment. We've been making efforts to uh cut down on our inflow and our infiltration via smoke testing. We started last winter, and then the COVID hit, so we kind of backed off of that. And we reached out to the Wooton Company, who was dealing with this issue in the early nineties, and they're, they're on board for helping us solve this, I guess going on thirty year old problem. And uh, the other part of the proposal was having a rental meter installed, so we can do a side-by-side comparison with the meter that's in place. And you'll, you see that that came in this morning for just over seventeen thousand dollars for a four month rental. And the hope is that after four months, we'll have enough significant rain events and regular weather events to compare the flow data, their meter versus our meter, and they can help navigate us to a reasonable expectation or agreement for how Rocky Mount is, is billing us and the approach for measuring the wastewater.
Where would this money come from to pay for this?
Well, the fifty-five hundred, we can take out of contract services for, uh, in the sewer budget. The seventeen thousand eighty dollars to rent this other meter, we're gonna have to pull out of reserves, cause we haven't budgeted enough money in our FY twenty-one budget for this seventeen thousand dollar expense. And um, it is with some urgency that Lee and I bring this. I mean, we're, we're seeing about a forty-five thousand dollar per month over what it had been past year and the years before. And uh, you know, we know the meter was recalibrated, I don't know exactly when, January, February, and since that time, the bills have been significantly higher each month. And we don't feel as if, looking at our water consumption, between what we buy from Rocky Mount and what we're pumping and putting in our own system with our wells, that it can, it, it could have gone up that much consistently every month.
Did you say anything to them about it? Have you confronted Rocky Mount about it?
Uh, we've, we've made it known that we want to, you know, consider this. We've asked, we've reached out for questions with getting flow data, you know, who's calibrating the meter, um, things like that. Some, sometime, you know, depending who you're reaching out to, your communications can be few and far between.
So since January, it looks like we're about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars over what we normally would pay. That's a lot of money.
What was the, what was the cost of this prior to the beginning of the year? Roughly, a month? What was normal?
Maybe...
Two ninety, two eighty?
Yeah, the last one was, was it, it was over three, wasn't it?
Yeah.
So do you sense that they are open to an adjustment?
Well, if we can prove it, they would obviously be open to it.
I don't know that the conversation about an adjustment can happen without reasonable data to support the conversation.
But a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar adjustment, they, you know...
Yeah, we're probably looking at six hundred thousand for the full year.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And, and spending seventeen and another fifty-five hundred, i- it seems like the best thing to do at this point, so that we can get the data, and hopefully that...
With hopes that the data comes back in our favor.
If that's the only way we can certainly determine that, in, you know, that it's, we're being overcharged, we don't really have a choice, I don't think.
Lee, did, do you mind explaining some of the reasons why you think it might be miscalibrated?
Some of the reasons we think it's miscalibrated is, um, we've uh brought in two different people, uh, two different, say consultants for lack of a better word, two different industry professionals, rather, to take a look at the flume and, you know, when the water flows over the, the flume, it, I don't know the, the right word, but it's supposed to be a, a smooth flow. We have a lot of turbulence on the downstream side of the flume, which, um, you know, an engineer could better explain, but it, it's not a good thing. You want, you want calm water on the, the downstream side of the flume. The, uh, one opinion was, one opinion was, there's a, there's a better meter that could be used for the application, and another opinion was that the company that calibrated this meter at our flume, uh, had a recent miscalibration that cost another small town a significant amount of money, that wasn't caught, you know, until further investigation. But it was, it was confirmed that the, the flume and the meter were calibrated incorrectly, causing the increase in fees.
So how long do you think this has been going on?
Excuse me?
How long do you think this has been going on?
Well, since at least nineteen ninety-four.
But most significantly, within the last six months.
Right. I mean, that's when, you know, I would say it's, it's come to our, our attention, but I know that the town's been dealing with it since at least then, and, you know, more recently, um, Randy, Sam and I have been put on alert with the increase in bills and the, the need to make this, um, side-by-side comparison.
Well, we certainly do need it to get that taken care of.
It gives us leg to stand on, you know, confirm some suspicions.
And since we're not getting much response or cooperation from Rocky Mount, I think that we need to go forward with this, and try to get this, the second meter in place so that we can evaluate and then present a case to the city for some, some refund.
Can you make that into a motion?
I do.
That we approve this agreement with Wooton?
I, uh, make a motion to approve the agreement with Wooton Company for overseeing installation, and also to approve the lease and installation of a temporary sanitary, sanitary sewer wastewater flow meter.
Second. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Our, um, next item is the consideration of the, uh, no, it's not, it's the budget amendment. So let's look at those. Um, the Cooley Library was awarded the federal L S T A E's grant for fiscal year twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. I, I wonder if the librarian's getting a lot of grants, I'm proud of her. In the amount of fifteen thousand, um, eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars. The grant fund requires a local match in the amount of five thousand two hundred and eighty-nine dollars, and will be used to implement a stream program. The attached budget, and they're good programs, the attached budgement, budget amendment appropriates fund balance for the local match and makes grant funds available for expenditure. And so the staff recommends that we approve the budget amendment, so do I? And they, that was in there for us to look at. Do I hear a motion?
Motion, motion made.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Is our librarian here tonight?
She is, I see her back there.
Thank you so much.
Way to go! Keep it up!
Thank you.
We want to read about something every time.
I got another one up for you.
Good, 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 good.
Is that matching?
Um, this one's a ten thousand dollar one, uh, this called the S L N C Care, L S T A is for twenty twenty, twenty-one, it's a ten dollar one.
No match.
No match.
That's why we, we need some no match.
Right. Uh, our last, our last item for tonight is the Library Federal L S T A COVID nineteen Response Mini Grant. The Cooley Library was awarded the Federal L S T A COVID nineteen Response Mini Grant in the amount of one thousand dollars. The grant funds do not require local match and can be used to cover COVID nine, nine related expenses. The attached budget amendment makes grant funds available for expenditure, and you had an opportunity to read that part of our meeting. So, um, the staff recommends that we approve the budget amendment, uh, number two. Do I hear a motion?
Please approve.
A second? All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Keep up the good work. Keep up the good work. We appreciate that.
Can you write a grant to get the cost down for this meter we got in the bucket?
I know, we need some grants. Do the council members have any comments for our citizens?
I'd like to thank our police and fire departments for taking care of us last night when we had no idea what was happening. And I think we were, we dodged a bullet, right, Chris?
Yes, we did.
The forecasting was not on point.
For us.
But they were telling us that the winds would stay the same even when they hit land coming up the 95 corridor, which it didn't happen. It fell apart.
Thank the Lord.
Lee is a great official.
He's in West Palm Beach.
That's where is it? That's where?
I just want to thank all the staff. Tequila did a good job on the library grants. And I appreciate all that all of our department heads and staff are doing to help keep us moving forward, even in these kind of crazy times that we're in. Just appreciate all that you're doing. Thank you.
Well, they've already said it all. I echo what both of the council people have said. Our town staff doing an outstanding job. They went out and cleaned all the drains, anticipating everything to be worse. And I got up this morning and rode around just to see how bad we got hit. And the only thing I saw was a big tree up near Cooley Corner that fell over. And the mayor told me that happened yesterday before the storm came. And I didn't see it then. So we did dodge a bullet.
Yes.
We did dodge a bullet, but, and we've dodged quite a few bullets lately compared to other neighborhoods. And just keep the community of Windsor in your prayers because if you saw the news tonight, they got hit hard.
They did.
Very hard. There was a trailer park with seven trailers there and there's only two of them standing now. The rest of it is just splinters. Everybody's been displaced and stuff like that. And I've got a friend down in New Bern, he got hit, but not seriously bad, but bad enough. So we're blessed. We were blessed last night and we continue to be blessed. So let's, staff, just keep up the good work. And I wish you guys would stop bringing these dead going high dollar projects. It's going to kill us. We got to do what we got to do.
Chris, the oak tree on Main Street, did that happen during a squall that we had, not yesterday, but the day before?
That happened right, when it first rained, maybe it was.
Yesterday.
Some wind ahead of it, yeah.
And it was totally rotten?
Yeah, it was hollow.
Yeah, it's hollow.
What worries me is, you know, we've had two other trees down there that we found out were rotten. What might be the issues with those other ones down there too.
Yeah.
So keep an eye on them.
Did it hit anything?
No.
It was amazing how it fell.
It fell right between those two houses.
It was just
I'm glad it fell that way instead of
It was like it was planned, wasn't it? Then somebody held it while it fell. Anyway, thank you so much.
Mayor, let me ask this. Some meetings back, we had one of our residents here in town that came up to the council and asked us about removing dead trees that were around, that were along the Main Street, Washington Street.
That's DOT.
That, well, the one that fell yesterday was obviously dead.
But it was in someone's yard.
It was in somebody's yard. But do we have any more out there that we probably need to remove before it falls and hurts somebody?
Yeah, Larry, I don't know. If you look at those trees from the exterior, all around their perimeter, they don't look diseased or damaged in any way, shape or form. But then, like the one Thursday that went down the other day.
You can look in and see.
You see it and it's completely hollow in the inside. They could all be that way, those willow oaks, I think is what they're called.
Yeah.
There's a good, there's a good two dozen of them along there between there and Alston. And they, for the most part, are DOT trees. And when that complaint came about the dead limbs and stuff, I did follow up with Bobby Lieberman. And he told me he was putting it in his work plan. And I think they use Marv Silver a lot for a lot of their tree trimming, the DOT does. So, but I haven't run into Marv this
I haven't seen Marvin up there doing any work.
No, I haven't seen him do any work either. And I haven't run into him to ask him if he's got a contract with him to take out dead branches and stuff in those trees.
Could you follow up with that?
I can.
The old oak at the corner of First and Washington that went down a couple of years ago, that stump has still not been removed.
Yeah, Bobby Lieberman told me they take the fallen over tree, but they don't do anything with stumps.
It's the property owner.
No, no, it's on the right of way.
That was just last year, I believe, Louise.
Any other comments? I'd like to thank the council and the citizens for coming out tonight and certainly our staff. And Sherri, have you been introduced at a council meeting?
I don't think so.
Well, our planning, our new planning director is here, Sherri. I don't know if they can see you or not, but she's here and she's working. And I say welcome, we're glad to have you. And we're diligently, not we, but Randy and the personnel, they're diligently trying to fill the positions. And I hope we can get them filled and we can all work together as a family, write grants and do some great things for Nashville. But I do appreciate all of you. If there are no other comments, the meeting is adjourned. No, I have to have a motion. Okay, second. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Meeting is adjourned.